Eminente Tontesha Tino Lesletur in Guam is back from recess. Welcome back, colleagues. When we left off, we were on the second reading file, and we will continue with that today. Senator Perez, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and good afternoon to my colleagues. I move to pass on file Bill 248-37COR.
There's a motion to pass on file Bill number 248-37COR. Is there any objection? Seeing no objection, that motion carries. Senator Perez, you're recognized.
I also would like to make the motion to reconsider the actions of the body regarding Bill 365-37COR, to place it in the third reading file.
We're still in second reading. That motion failed in the second reading, so there's a motion to reconsider it? Is there any objection to reconsidering the motion? It will be debatable, and it will be, if passed, also debatable.
Point of information, Madam Speaker, because the bill failed, wouldn't we have to go back to reconsider the actions of the body and do it in motions?
It failed right here where we are, in the second reading file. So she's making a motion to reconsider that vote, and that's a debatable motion. Is there anyone who would like to be recognized? If not, is there any objection? There's an objection. Senator Perez, did you want to be recognized on the motion? Or you may close on the motion?
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. I think this bill is critical to helping to restart our economy. You know, we just came back from a conference on tourism. And so what might you think this has an effect? I think this could have a potential effect because the type of businesses that are created on our island can provide a more resilient model. So as I was speaking earlier last week, a lot of these businesses during times, hard times, they're able to recover faster. And so that's what we really need in this economy, is to help bring back our economy, especially with tourism as our main driver. And considering that, you know, Greta was in full support of this bill, so was DRT. They're in full support in regards to monitoring and implementing it. And some of the testimony said that it would help to really bring back, it could be a potential boon to our economy, to help revive our economy today. I think most importantly, there are community members out there that are looking to develop more democratically controlled business models, much in line with what the current business is today, but this would entail more, you know, the workers being involved in the day-to-day operations, as well as, so they take part in not only the profits, but as well as the liabilities and losses. So it's a business model. It's not for everyone, but it does attract a certain type of population that's looking to address today's problems and make a profit. So additionally, this bill does not affect the cooperatives that exist today. So that's some of the concerns that was raised. And it's clearly stated that this bill does not impact the current cooperative, such as the Fisherman's Co-op and the Farmer's Co-op. And so what it really does, it helps to expand business opportunities here on Guam, and that's what we're looking for. I think, as we look towards the new term, I think it's really critical that we lay the groundwork to establish this. And this is really truly a landmark, you know, bill. This is a landmark type of legislation, almost similar to what was created in the business, what we currently have in our business statutes. And it really gives a clearer path for someone who really wants to start cooperative. And cooperatives are known to have been successful globally. And, you know, we're looking to really expand Guam's horizons, and I ask for my colleagues' support to reconsider, not only reconsider the actions of the body, but also to support this bill. Thank you so much.
Sisus Massey, Senator. On the motion to reconsider, the motion to place Bill 365 into the third reading, there's been an objection to the reconsideration. All in favor of the reconsideration, please raise your hand. Motion carries. On the bill itself, Senator Perez, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place this bill into the third reading file.
All right. On that motion, Senator Canata, you're recognized. Oh, sorry. On that motion, is there anyone else who'd like to be recognized? Senator Parkinson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise in support of this motion to get this bill to the third reading file and to pass it. I think it's important for us to invest our resources of this body to forming organizations like these co-ops to help kickstart our economy again. Now, I hear the concerns of some of my colleagues that there may be some flaws in the legislation, but I believe that's true of every legislation. There is no such thing as perfect legislation. And I think it would not be prudent of us to throw the baby out with the bathwater, as it were. If there are some problematic areas in this bill, let's handle them when they come about. But I think it would be a disservice to this body, to the author, and to the community if we were to discard the entire bill wholesale this term, when we have an opportunity to pass it right now. This should have passed last week, but I'm glad that we have an opportunity to relitigate the issue today, because I believe today this issue will pass, and it should pass. And I encourage all my colleagues to please support it. With that, I yield my time. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Sisus Massey, Senator, on the bill. Is there anyone else who'd like to be recognized? If not, then the sponsor may close on the bill, on that motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and I appreciate the sentiments of the retiring speaker in support of this bill. And again, this has been worked on for many, many months, and it's really about ensuring that we empower our community as we move towards economic sustainability. And we heard the stories, those that testified, how if this business model existed during the time of the pandemic, they probably would have, they felt that this could have saved their business. And so, you know, in thinking of the heartache that our community has gone through, you know, what can we do to help build economic sustainability for our island? This is just one measure. And I think that's what we're all looking for on this island. As the federal dollars dry up, we need to come, you know, we need to put our boots on the ground and hard work, and empowering our community to help build our economy bit by bit. And I think this is one measure that can help support this. You know, I believe that economic development is so critical during this time, and this is one measure that can help make that happen. So I ask for my colleagues' support. Thank you.
Sisus Massey, Senator, on the motion to place Bill number 365-37COR, as amended by the committee and further amended on the floor to the third reading file, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, that motion carries. We're continuing in the second reading. We're on bill number 337-37COR. Senator Canata, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I apologize again for having to put this aside, but it is my hope that we can pass this legislation, and we can actually finally resolve this property for Mr. Duñez. Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place Bill 33-37, as amended by the Committee on Health, Land, Justice, and Culture, sponsored by myself, Roy A. B. Canata, and co-sponsored by my colleagues, Duane T. D. Siniklis and Joe S. Augustine, an act to authorize the Maga Hagen Guam to condemn and purchase 1,149 square meters of private property, Lot 215-2-1-2, Maena, municipality of Ascot, Maena, for to provide the further legal development of a necessary drainage ditch and ponding basin in the municipality of Maena, into the third reading file, and I wish to speak on it.
Please proceed.
To my colleagues and members of the 37th Guam Legislature, Bill 33-37, as amended, addresses the persistent issue of flooding in the low-lying areas of Maena. Since 1980, the Guam Department of Public Works has taken proactive steps to alleviate flooding and improve the access for residents by constructing this drainage ditch. While this initiative has been effective for 40 years, recent rains have underscored the pressing need for repairs and upgrades to this existing infrastructure to prevent further deterioration. It's important to acknowledge the private landowner, who has kindly allowed his property to be used for public access without even receiving any proper compensation. Given the advanced age and impact of this property, the landowner has expressed his preference for land purchase, which this bill intends to address, in line with also another amendment by the speaker herself. This bill tackles the issue of compensation while ensuring that the Maena residents still benefit from this infrastructure development. Thank you, my colleagues.
Sisus Massey, Senator, on the bill. Senator Duñez, you're recognized.
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I wish to speak on the bill, but before I do that, I want to make it clear to the body. I am conflicted on this bill, and I will be asking during voting to be recused from voting on this, because this land and this proposal of the exchange is going to go to my first cousin. But I want to speak to this for a very distinct reason. Madam Speaker, I was the director of the Department of Land Management several years ago, and one of the things that was consistently a request to DLM was the issue of discussing the possibility of getting into these areas with perennial flooding conditions, particularly during storms and monsoon-type weather. Madam Speaker, the reason why Department of Land Management was approached many times on this is because many of us know that there have been approvals over the years of subdivisions without considering proper drainage. There has been development that has created flooding downstream to homes that had already been built when approvals had been done in other areas. In this instance, actually, this property was claimed for this purpose due to a typhoon. And in order to mitigate the issues with the residents that were in the area, they did it through creating this ponding basin. Madam Speaker, you know that the government, from time to time, will go in and execute measures such as this in order to be able to basically create relief for the greater good, knowing that at some time, they can come back and remedy the situation. This proposal is that remedy. But I speak to this, Madam Speaker, because there are so many other situations in so many different villages where this situation has happened. And I think this is an example of exactly what the government should do. Madam Speaker, you may have remembered even several, several legislatures ago, there was a bill that allowed for freestanding opportunities for construction over ponding basins, that the government could actually utilize that for that purpose. And I bring this up because the government, in my opinion, Madam Speaker, does not lose when it acquires property in exchange or purchases property to mitigate flooding, because it doesn't render the land unusable. There's so many other technological ways to use property. So the government doesn't lose, and it mitigates a problem that is perennial on our island that many of our people know about. So I speak only to the situation and having knowledge of exactly what happened in this instance, and I know the residents of Maena have greatly benefited from the fact that this land has been used to mitigate flooding and to become a ponding basin, thereby the family is entitled, just like anyone else would be entitled to remediation within the government. But once again, as I close, I'm going to ask all my colleagues to please consider, when we come to the voting pile, excuse me from voting on this, whereas my first cousin will be the beneficiary of this legislation, should it pass, and it's improper for me to vote. Sisus Massey.
Sisus Massey, on the bill. Is there anyone who'd like to be recognized?
Please proceed.
Sisus Massey, I rise in support of this bill, and want to thank the author who proposed it on behalf of Mr. Duñez. This is one property owner amongst many on Guam who face very similar situations. And the reason that they have not been addressed, according to what I thought I heard at that hearing from some of our agencies, is that because if they address one, they're going to be forced to address all of them. And really, the concern is that we have laws that say they should be addressing all of them. It's land that's inversely condemned. It's been taken for use without any formal proceedings. The government is using it. This is very common along Route 4. Many of these private properties that we are using for our road today still technically belong to private landowners, but they've been unable to use them. And this is recognized very clearly in the law that allows them to pursue compensation for the government's use of their property. So I want to thank Mr. Duñez for his fortitude in pursuing this. And I just wanted to explain some of the changes that were made in the committee. We changed it from a land exchange to an outright purchase, and this is partly based on Mr. Duñez's testimony, and of course, the testimony of the Department of Land Management, who had the property that was going to be used for the exchange, and the Department of Public Works, that very clearly confirmed that this property is being used for drainage at this time, and there is no way that the property owners could use it. The land that they had proposed to exchange at first, on an area-for-area basis, with this land in Maena, was up in Daredo. And that property, according to Mr. Duñez, would involve, he did not think it would be usable to him, that property, because it did not have utilities either. It did not have power or water, and he would incur a huge cost to make that property usable. So we amended the bill to make it an outright purchase. And I'd like to further amend the bill with a floor amendment that's been passed out. To be very clear, the purchase price has been set and agreed to by DPW, DLM. This is an assessment done by DPW and testified to. And this would come from general fund revenues, and my amendment is to make it come from FY24 excess funds. And that's based on the last CRR, which showed us our excess revenues for FY24 in September, at the end of the fiscal year. And less, any of the budget or supplemental budget provisions that appropriated FY24 excess leaves a remainder of $195,822 in FY24 excess, and this amount to be paid to Mr. Duñez is $87,300. So just to give him peace of mind, and these landowners are very smart, and they are holding us accountable for taking their land, first of all, for not doing anything about it for years, second of all, and third of all, he called our office in to make sure that this funding source is actually going to come to fruition. So based on the administration's BBMRs accounting and their CRR reports, this amount should come to fruition. It should be payable today, just like we have used FY24 excess for current budget items. So hopefully, Mr. Duñez will see this immediately, as soon as Department of Land Management does the documents. And again, I just wanted to point out that all property owners on Guam should be compensated for the government's use of their land, for the government's conversion of their land into public use, and that we should not be the perpetrators of what the people of Guam have suffered from other parties for many, many, many years. We have seen the effects of this in homelessness, in poverty, and we cannot sit by and let that happen any longer. So I completely support the bill, and I thank the sponsor for agreeing to the amendments that were made in the committee, and hopefully, this amendment will pass as well, Madam Speaker.
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker, on the amendment, anyone wishing to speak. Senator Brown, I will recognize you on the Speaker Terlaih amendment. Please proceed.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I do support Speaker Terlaih's amendment, and certainly overall, support the bill. I did attend the hearing, but Mr. Duñez was present, relaying the challenges and the time that it has taken for the governor to help the government of Guam essentially to address the situation of his property, where Public Works took his property to be able to address the construction of a ponding basin, to address the flooding concerns that they had in the village of Maena. And I have to tell you, I concur with the speaker's comments. I mean, it's one thing, we criticize the federal government, you know, repeatedly for the land takings, particularly the land takings after the war. But the government of Guam as well is also guilty of this very same crime, shall we say, of taking private property, using it for public purposes, and then, of course, leaving the owners of those properties to be uncompensated. If you ever wonder why there are portions, particularly on Route 4, particularly as we head into southern Guam, as to why you don't have the type of maintenance or repairs on those roads, or you see railings on the side of the road that have not been replaced, particularly in some areas that are, we would consider hazardous or unsafe, it's primarily because the federal government will not pay for the construction or repair of those roads or those railings if the property is not owned by the government of Guam. And as a result, that certainly puts our people in some very challenging situations, because, you know, we don't have safe roads. And almost in almost all cases, the government of Guam itself appropriates such a minuscule amount, even from the fees that are charged, or the monies that we're supposed to get, especially as we've seen in recent years, we've rolled back the gas tax. But the government itself does not put a significant amount of money into the maintenance of road facilities. Perhaps even the government should not be doing construction work on private property, but it has for a long time. And so where does that leave our people with such limited amounts of money actually being compensated, or money being put into these repairs? It leaves us to the tremendous disadvantages of our community. And I know it's probably going to take a lot of time, it's probably going to take a number of years moving forward, and certainly going to take a significant amount of money to start chipping away at compensating the landowners. Because could you imagine someone coming in and taking your property in this day? Taking your home that you lived in and taking your property? Well, many of our families in the past have experienced that, and we're very quick to, you know, chastise and criticize Uncle Sam. We love his money. We want him to send more of it. But certainly, we criticize them, and justifiably so, for the land takings that they've done. But, you know, the government of Guam has not been far behind. And certainly, you know, one of the issues Mr. Duñez brought up is he is up in his senior years, and how sad that he has to come down here and essentially fight for what should already have been his, to be put at such a disadvantage of literally having to come forth and beg the government to either compensate him for his property or give him another property of equal value. And as the speaker had mentioned, you know, I guess the property that he had been given an option for in Daredo was going to be very expensive to develop, because it did not have infrastructure readily available for the development of that property. It certainly would have cost far more than what the government would compensate him in land exchange. So I certainly support this, and I hope the future legislatures will start chipping away at the injustice that the government of Guam itself has imposed on landowners on Guam by simply taking their property for use and not compensating them. I mean, we see that even with bus stops. I mean, of course, we need bus stops for our children, you know, to safely wait for their bus at the beginning of the day or the end of the day. But you also find something as that, bus stops that are put on private property without consideration to the landowners, or compensation. If we determine it's such a critical need that the people of Guam need to acquire the property, then by all means, we should make every effort to do what's right, what's fair, and what's just to these landowners by properly addressing compensation to acquire the property. Or as in many cases where the government in the past, you know, we take the road down south, and we just think, oh, this is the road. But there are significant sections of that road that are not owned by the government of Guam, and certainly, you can understand the frustration that landowners, and as every generation goes by, it gets harder, especially if the land is inherited, it's passed down to children, grandchildren, great-grandchildren. It multiplies the problem even more. So I certainly do rise in support of this bill, and certainly hope that, you know, time is no longer delayed for Mr. Duñez to get compensation for the property that's been taken from him. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak on this amendment, and I appreciate our colleagues. I'm sure we should be able to vote for this bill collectively. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. On the amendment, as proffered by Speaker Terlaih, anyone else wishing to speak? If not, Speaker, would you like to close, or just call for the motion? On the amendment, as proffered by Speaker, Senator Roy, the author of the legislation, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. If I could just ask for like a five-minute recess, we're just making a little technical legal correction.
I'm going to go ahead and afford that momentary recess.
Senator Roy, I'll recognize you at this time.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So colleagues, on line 16-17, page 2, I would like to amend the speaker's amendment to add language to be paid no later than January 2, 2021, to Mr. Luis Duñez. The reasoning for that is to ensure, 2025, January 2, 2025, January 2, 2025, to Mr. Luis Duñez. Again, I'm trying to make sure that this individual gets his compensation. Obviously, he's been a tireless advocate for himself. He really wants to, you know, not give the government any more hardship or any more delay with this property. He just wants to be compensated fairly for this delay. So I don't want it to delay any further, and I want to make sure this individual gets compensated, allowing the governor to act immediately. But I think January 2, 2025, should be enough time for her to write that check and get it to this individual.
Thank you. On that amendment, are there any objections? Senator Tadegui, on the amendment to the Terlaih amendment.
I'm speaking on the amendment to the amendment.
Yes, you are.
Okay, so the amendment to the amendment.
Senator Roy's amendment.
Yeah. I just need one minute to talk with legal counsel, because if we are designating excess revenue for FY24 that's already been obligated... excess revenue for FY twenty-four that's already been obligated, up to, I think it's over ten million dollars, there should be more than just, you know, make sure it's not.
I will, I will allow you.
So we need to do this correctly, if this is the intent.
I will allow you a minute.
Okay.
We're in recess. Ymina Chantaj Chetina Lestletur in Guam is back from recess. Thank you, Senator Titegui.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to take a short recess to discuss with the author of the amendment to the amendment, and to ensure that Mr. Duñez's family receives that money. We don't want any hindrance, and this is just a, a way to, again, ensure he receives the money in a timely manner. So I thank the author of the amendment to the amendment to make those changes and ensure that. So thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Titegui. Senator Canata, I'm gonna recognize you, I think you have a motion to withdraw, so.
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. At this time, I'd like to withdraw my previous amendment.
To, to the.
To the amendment of the speaker.
To the Speaker Tulahe amendment.
Yes.
On that motion, is there any objection? Seeing none, motion carries. Senator Canata, I will recognize you at this time, because I understand you have an amendment similar to what was withdrawn. Please proceed.
Correct. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Colleagues, line sixteen dash seventeen, page two, to amend the bill to read as additionally, Ilastor in Guam further appropriates eighty-seven thousand three hundred from the general, from revenues collected in excess of the adopted level in public law thirty-seven dash forty-two amended as enumerated in the consolidated revenue and expenditure report, CRER, of September twenty twenty-four, to the Department of Public Works for the acquisition of land and shall be paid to Mr. Luis Duñez no later than January second, two thousand twenty-five, notwithstanding any other provision of law.
Thank you very much, Senator Canata. Are there anyone wishing to speak on that? If not, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none, motion carries. Senator Canata, you still have the floor on the, the Speaker Tulahe amendment as amended. Are you okay?
Yes, all is good, ma'am. Just asking for my colleague's support and to make sure that Mr. Duñez gets his compensation. Thank you so much.
Thank you. On the speaker amendment, anyone else wishing to speak? If not, are there any objections? Or Speaker, would you like to close? Are there any amendments? Seeing or hearing none, motion carries. We are now on the main, you still have the floor, Speaker. I will allow you, I think you have a couple of minutes left. Please proceed.
Sidoos Massey, I, I, I do have another amendment that I'd like to propose, and so counsel has helped me to prepare it, it should be passed out soon, but I think we can do it, hopefully. If you look at the bill, it's going to be on line fourteen, on page two, where the bill currently authorizes Imaga Haga in Guam to initiate the condemnation of lot, to change that, and to say instead, to authorize, authorizes Imaga Haga in Guam to purchase lot in Maena. And this is because there's two ways that DPW gets land when they need it, for their purposes, for drainage, for roads, or they can negotiate with the landowners and simply purchase it. And when we asked DPW at the hearing, why didn't you just do that? You don't need our authority to do that. And they said, oh, because we didn't have money. So they're claiming that they didn't have the eighty-seven thousand dollars to compensate this, this family. So I just want to get rid of the condemnation proceedings, I don't think we even need to go there, we don't need to make him drag out in court and not other ways for condemnation, and really, just the purchase, that it's always been within the jurisdiction of DPW to allow them to implement that. That would be my amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. On that amendment, are there any objections? Anyone wishing to speak? If not, I hearing no objections, motion carries. Anyone else on the main motion is authored by the good Senator from Baragada? If not, Senator Roy, would you like to close?
Being that this is possibly my last legislation, again, I just want to thank my colleagues, thank you, Madam Speaker, clerks, and the legal team for their remark, for their support. On Bill three-three dash thirty-seven, I renew my motion to place Bill three-three dash thirty-seven as amended by the committee into the third reading, huh? Three-three seven dash thirty-seven.
Three, yes.
Yes, three-three seven dash thirty-seven as amended by the committee into the third reading.
And as further amended on the floor.
And amended, yes. To the voter.
Okay, on that, Senator, okay, on, on that motion to place Bill number three-three seven dash thirty-seven COR as amended and then further amended on the floor into the third reading voting file, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none, motion carries. Senator Barnett, did you have a point of information?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Actually, I wanted to make a motion to go back to motions.
There is a motion to go back to motions. Are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none, motion carries. Senator Barnett, I will address you at this time.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd like to motion at this time, notwithstanding the objections of Imaga Haga in Guam, to place a vetoed Bill number one-eight-five dash thirty-seven into the voting file.
On that, are there any objections?
And to discuss.
Yes, you are allowed to discuss. Senator Barnett, you may proceed.
Sidoos Massey, Madam Speaker, and buenos en of the day to the people of Guam and to my colleagues. The conversation about building a new hospital on Guam dates back many years, likely to the early two thousands, long before I assumed office. However, the specific initiative now before us, Bill one-eight-five, is the measure I introduced with my colleagues to honor a commitment to the people of Guam, has its roots in my time as a reporter. I was covering the issues surrounding Eagles Field, where the concerns of the original landowners were being disregarded. They felt their voices were not being heard. At that time, serious questions surrounded the transactions between the U.S. military and Governor Leon Guerrero. The details of the Eagles Field dealings didn't add up, and I felt it was my duty to provide a platform for the landowners to express their concerns. Simultaneously, I witnessed troubling events that deepened my conviction that our people were being excluded from the decision-making processes that directly affected their lives. One such incident occurred when a community advocate tried to attend a Guam Memorial Hospital Authority meeting, where plans for a new hospital were reportedly being discussed. The individual was forcibly removed by law enforcement from the meeting. At that moment, I knew something was fundamentally wrong. The lack of transparency within, within this administration was undeniable, and I, and became one of the key reasons why I chose to run for public office. I chose to step away from the microphone and into public service because I believed it was a time for a change in how things were being done. When I was elected as a senator in the thirty-seventh Guam Legislature, the need for a new hospital was still a pressing issue for our community. Almost immediately, my colleagues and I were unfairly scapegoated and accused of giving false hope to the Eagles Field original landowners. The truth, however, is much more straightforward, my dear people of Guam. Documents from the U.S. military confirmed that the land in question was always intended to be returned to the people of Guam. The governor needed to follow the proper local process to ensure the land's rightful return. Still, instead, she chose to disregard the law, prioritizing her preferences over the needs and the rights of the people she was elected to serve. This disregard for the law and the people of Guam only strengthened my commitment to change what was being done. It reinforced my commitment to push for transparency, accountability, and a future where the voices of our people are heard and respected. As the discussion progressed, eight of us voted in favor of the Epaule Point location, which according to the Matrix Design Group hired by the governor, was the most cost-effective and one of the best options for the new hospital. Yet, the governor rejected the recommendation of the Matrix Design Group, citing concerns over fault lines, fire ants, and any other issues she could raise. However, colleagues, people of Guam, we know that history tells a different story. These concerns were never mentioned when the original Guam Memorial Hospital was built. The old GMH stood on the same fault lines, and it didn't collapse due to fire ants or rhino beetle infestations. It deteriorated because of longstanding neglect and years of underfunding. Unfortunately, we are now witnessing history repeat itself, with the current state of GMH reflecting the same failures by government leaders to act, leading us to once again face the same challenges. I have said this from the very beginning, we need a new hospital, and we need it now. We can all agree on that, but more than that, we need transparency, honesty, and accountability from Governor Leon Guerrero. If the governor has another agenda, one that involves relocating the hospital for reasons beyond public health, then she owes it to the people of Guam to be honest about it. When my colleagues and I passed Bill one-eight-five in two thousand twenty-three, the governor had committed to set aside three hundred million dollars to build a new hospital anywhere else except at Epaule Point. However, as time passed, we saw her spend a hundred million dollars for banking fees and other government expenditures unrelated to the new hospital's construction. The legislature has been unfairly blamed for the delays in building a new hospital, which is why I've consistently urged the governor to be honest and to work collaboratively with us. No matter where we choose to build, we know it'll take five to eight years before a new hospital opens its doors and begins serving patients. In the meantime, the current Guam Memorial Hospital continues to deteriorate, and I cannot understand why the governor hasn't utilized more of the available funds to extend the life of the existing facility. Now, looking at the situation today, we see that since the beginning of this year, the governor has been working with Gura to push her agenda without the legislature's approval. What happened next? Gura, following the governor's direction, engaged with property owners and spent millions of dollars acquiring land next to the original Eagles Field properties. Our people are now facing the threat of condemnation and eminent domain, while millions of dollars are being spent elsewhere to acquire private properties. These resources should be directed towards improving GMH, where the needs are urgent and far more critical than we may realize or can afford. Here we are today, with Gura facing violations of the open government law, and the governor circumventing the legislature to push through an agenda without transparency. However, no matter where we decide to build, we must follow the law. At the end of the day, as I have said before, we need a new hospital, but we also need our governor to be. our governor to be honest with the people of Guam. That's what they truly deserve. If the governor had been upfront with the people, upfront with the people of Guam about her intentions, and if her true goal was to build a new hospital, she would not be alone in that effort. For we well know that every governor before her has made the same promises. The key difference, however, is that none of these previous governors had access to the hundreds of millions of dollars that Governor Leon Guerrero now controls. I'm a simple person, and I like to keep things straightforward. It's like saving money for Christmas for our kids. We wouldn't touch that savings, no matter the circumstance, because it's for Christmas for the kids. Even if the car needed gas, we would rather count the pennies than dip into that Christmas fund. So when the governor used the first $100 million she set aside for the new hospital, I was concerned. When she used another $100 million, I criticized it. I wrote letters, because in my simple mind, 300 million minus 200 million equals just 100 million left for the new hospital. And now, as we approach Christmas, the question remains: Where is the money? My colleagues, I stand before you today and take a look around our island. Guess what? It's Christmas time. And Governor Leon Guerrero, Christmas is here. And we need to give the people of Guam the gift of a new hospital. So where is the money? When I asked about the $100 million left in the Christmas savings, the governor responded by saying, we could lose it if we don't obligate it. Then, the governor turned to the people of Guam and said, you, you, the people and the taxpayers, you must go to the bond market and borrow hundreds of millions of dollars to build this new hospital. And then, she placed the blame on the legislature for the situation again. But colleagues, I ask you to pause and reflect on that for just a moment, because the governor has repeatedly asserted that the legislature has no say in how she spends this money and that we have no authority to question her. So one thing is clear: Governor Lou Leon Guerrero has spent 200 million that was promised to the people of Guam for the new hospital, and she did so without any input from the legislature. So the notion that she now needs the legislature's approval to obligate the remaining $100 million she set aside for the new hospital is yet another example of why we need the governor to be honest with the people of Guam. So governor, perhaps you'll find yourself on the naughty list this Christmas. But regardless of personalities, preferences, or politics, one thing remains true: We need a new hospital. What we also need is for the governor to be honest with the people of Guam and reveal her true intentions. Governor Leon Guerrero, if there's a bigger plan that this simple person doesn't understand, I'm asking you to share it, not just with me, but with the people of Guam. If your agenda is to relocate the hospital because you want to invest in luxury real estate at Epaule Point, then just say that, but be honest with our people. Because the bill before us today, the measure you vetoed, was our commitment to the people of Guam to build a new hospital. Colleagues, this measure you are voting on today, a vote that overrides the governor's veto and keeps our commitment to our people. I want to thank the eight senators who helped send this bill to Adalou. Senator Chris Duñez, Senator Jesse Lujan, Senator Joanne Brown, Senator Telo Tideguit, Senator Dwayne San Nicolás, Senator Sabina Perez, and Speaker Therese Terlahi. Today, colleagues, we have an opportunity to give the people of Guam what they deserve. Together, let's make this Christmas the moment we deliver a new hospital for the people of Guam. Sidoz Massey, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Barnett. Anyone else? Senator Tom Fisher, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I'd like to set the record straight on a few things. We've, we always in this legislature are talking frequently about the concept of transparency, and especially when it comes to the creation of the new hospital. We are always saying that we are frozen out, nobody ever wanted to talk to us, we're not invited to the meetings, nobody wants to, wants us to sit at the cool kids table, and that is simply untrue. We have had evidence before this body that we were invited repeatedly to join in on meetings about the construction of the new hospital, and we, the legislature, through our leadership, elected not to attend. It was us who refused to listen. So it is not for us to complain about a lack of transparency at Adalou when we are, in fact, the ones who caused the problem. They have been transparent, more so frankly, than they needed to be, because this is an executive decision. Where the hospital is located belongs to the executive branch. How much money we are going to spend on the new hospital is the question for the legislature. We are not the executive branch. We are the legislative branch. We have two separate important functions in our scheme of governance. The governor will decide where the hospital goes. She will come to us and say, legislature, please give me X amount of dollars to construct the hospital. It is not for us to go in there and say, well, governor, I want you to put in a beige carpet as opposed to a black carpet. Governor, I want the walls painted with this sort of paint, but not that sort of paint. Governor, I want to have approval authority over the architectural and engineering documents that are being produced for the new hospital. That is not our place. That is clearly an executive branch function. We will, we consistently refuse to acknowledge this fundamental concept of separation of powers, and we create controversies where they don't exist. The 37th Guam Legislature will go down in history as the legislature that delayed the construction of a new hospital for the people of Guam by two years, and while we were at it, wrecked two academic school years. That is our legacy. Now, the question is, where will the hospital go? Should it go to Timuning or should it go to Mingilau? If we go to Timuning, we will produce nothing in economic stimulus. We're going to build a glass box up here on a cliff that will have to be torn down and rebuilt in another 25 years. Meanwhile, no economic growth will occur in that village that hasn't already occurred. Again, Timuning has banks, Timuning has hotels. The entire area has every sort of retail establishment and entertainment establishment you could imagine. Nothing about the construction of the hospital in Timuning is going to prove beneficial to the people of Guam. We will get no economic stimulation from that. However, if we go to Mingilau, an area on Guam that is not as developed as other areas, if we go to Mingilau, we notice that we will have to build probably a two-lane divided highway, which is going to require all sorts of infrastructure. We will need sewage lines, we will need water lines, we will need electrical utilities up through that area. And as that stimulation comes to fruit, all of the millions spent on the construction of that infrastructure, do you not believe as well that others will come to benefit from that infrastructure? Say a Walmart, say a Hilton Hotel, because people are going to use that hospital, and they are going to come to the hospital and bring their family members. What else will come along with that? We will have retail establishments. We will have housing communities that now are able to take advantage of the new infrastructure we have placed. The economic multiplication of going to Mingilau is evident. It is self-evident. It is stunning why it is so hard for many people to appreciate how foolish it would be to decide not, not to enjoy the benefits of economic growth, yet refuse and refuse to acknowledge the inherent obvious wisdom of going to Mingilau. Why is that? I suspect, I believe, it is because the medical community has put out one canard after another about the disadvantages of going to Mingilau. Frankly, the medical communicating, community tells us that, well, my gosh, in the middle of the night, the phone might ring, and I'm going to have to drive 15 minutes to go to the hospital. God knows what will happen in that, as if, as if this community, this new medical complex would not have emergency services there. What, that, that entire argument has always consistently rung hollow. I think I have an alternate explanation. The doctors' community, who are very involved with members of this legislature in lobbying for this Mingilau, or excuse me, this Timuning facility, each and every one of them have chattel mortgages in their offices. A chattel mortgage is an obligation to pay for very expensive medical equipment, x-ray machines, I, God knows what else they have in their offices, all of which, if they were sincere and thought they might had to scramble up to Mingilau, because it's, God knows, it's a, you know, a three-hour plane ride away. If they have to scramble up there and they're telling the truth, that means they're going to have to pick up all this expensive equipment, move to a new facility, and erect, excuse me, erect a building in which to conduct their business. Don't be fooled. This is not, the doctors' community is not working for the benefit of the people, they are working for the benefit of their bottom line. They don't want to spend the money transporting all of this equipment to Mingilau. They wouldn't do it anyway. They wouldn't do it anyway. They're not, so far as I've heard from these talking heads that are constantly getting on the radio and talking about their, you know, they've got all these issues with their clients or their patients, and they have to get to them immediately, none of it, none of it is true. It is a naked attempt to clothe greed, greed with an accusation, not an implication, an accusation that they are acting in the people's interests. They are not. Now, the bottom line here is we are not building this hospital in Mingilau for us. It's not for us. There's not, there's one youngster in this entire body, but the rest of us have seen better days, I would say. This is not for us, it's for our children, it's for our grandchildren. It is the ability to provide medical services of the best imaginable, best imaginable throughout the Pacific. We, I've heard this said before, we need to drop this crab mentality that if Governor Lou Leon Guerrero does well, that that will somehow impede our ability to get elected or whatever the motivation is. That is the definition of a crab mentality. Forget about the rest of the people of Guam, let's sacrifice them on our altar of political ambition. If we can thwart the governor at every move she makes, we feel we are winning. Here's the, here's the bottom line. That hospital's getting built in Mingilau, the train has left, we're already turning dirt there. Are we going to honestly kick this over into the 38th Guam Legislature while the 38th Guam Legislature does the same bit of arguing over this? And instead of a two-year delay, we now have a four-year delay? We are a body that is responsible for the welfare of the people of Guam. Let's get that hospital built, let's put it in a place that will, that will redound to all of our benefits. Economic development, access to adequate, good healthcare, no longer having to leave island because you're having a heart problem, et cetera. Having the treatment done here on Guam and having it done competently, and having it done in an institution that will also accommodate veterans' needs, Manomko's needs, infants' needs, all the needs of all of us. Let's finally get this underway. Please do not override the governor's veto. Thank you, ma'am.
You're very welcome, Senator Fisher. Anyone wishing else to speak on the override? Senator Parkinson, you're recognized.
The hospital, how did? When I think about the hospital, I think about the hundreds of complicated, complex problems we are going to have to solve in the future. And it blows my mind that we are stuck on the first step, the absolute first step up a mountain we have to climb, and we cannot get past it. Where are we going to have it? The law's prescribed that the governor gets to decide, but we in the legislature decide that we know better. We are deciding we know better, and this chamber is intentionally sabotaging this hospital. For years, even before this crop of legislature, it was sabotaged under the previous governor. And now we're seeing history repeat itself. Who wants to wait until 2027 to start this conversation again? Not even break dirt, but just to start the conversation about step one again? Because if the arsonists in this chamber who are trying to burn this legislation and this hospital at that location down get their way, that's what we're effectively doing. We're effectively saying, we are going to kick the can to 2027 before we even begin the discussions of a location again. And then after a location is nominated, good luck if we hear that on the floor within a year. So we're looking at 2028, and, I mean, I don't know about you, but I don't see the next legislature being different from the history of previous legislatures that were marked by infighting and ineffectiveness. Maybe we're going to, maybe this next legislature will be different, and we won't fight about where the hospital location will be. But I mean, then we're going to start to get into 2028, 2029, and we might not even have a location picked out by then. Because people in this chamber keep thinking they know better. People in this chamber who ran for senator want to make decisions like they are the And I have to ask myself, is that what this is about? I mean, we've had continuity in leadership in this chamber for a while. We've had the same health chair for a long time. But all I've seen is our health chair saying no to a hospital, finding ways to sabotage a hospital. We are six years into the same health chair, we're still stuck on step one.
Point of information, Madam Speaker.
I'm sorry, ma'am, this is my time to speak.
Yeah, point of information. I am the health chair that he's possibly referring to, and as a point of information, I've never said no to a new hospital. In fact, I was part of the legislature that voted to finance a new hospital way before any site was selected. So there's no such thing, and I don't believe falsehoody should be stated on this floor.
Thank you, Senator.
And all we've done in that time is we've just added more cooks to the kitchen, and no dish has come out. So I have to ask myself, is this incompetence, or are they intentionally sabotaging? And I know the speaker to be one of the most brilliant political minds in this chamber, so I have to assume this is intentional, that she is intentionally sabotaging this hospital. And why? So that they could say in a couple of years, the previous governor couldn't build a hospital. Vote for me, I will build the hospital. Is that what, is that what we're leading up to? We're going to sabotage a hospital so we could say, vote for me, so I could build one myself? Remember this. Remember this moment, when the people sabotaging the hospital now decide they want to run for governor and have your vote. They want to burn down this plan for a hospital like arsonist and say to you, I'm going to be the one to be the hero to put it out. The doctors, the doctors are in it for themselves. Many of these doctors, some of the most vocal of these doctors, have millions of dollars invested in properties in Timuning. And if there was a Mingilau in, a hospital in Mingilau, well, how are these doctors going to retire with? well, how are these doctors going to retire with millions into the sunset if they cannot sell their businesses? If we build a new hospital in Mangilau, these doctors are going to be holding the bag because now it's going to be harder to sell it to new doctors coming in. I've spoken to doctors too. You know what the young doctors have told me? They don't care where a hospital is, they just want a functioning hospital. It's only the ones who are invested in the millions, who are looking out for their own interest, who want this hospital in Tumuning. I've been talking to the people of Guam. You know where the people of Guam want a new hospital? They want a hospital in Guam. They don't care where it is. Only in this body are we holding up the hospital. Only this body is responsible for the delay in this hospital. And now, this performative sabotage on this bill is now going to put hundreds of millions of dollars in jeopardy. If we pass this bill, if we override the governor's veto and prevent her from continuing her plans, this chamber will be personally responsible for lighting up all that money. And we don't even get to have a nice bonfire. I don't want to light up all this money. I want to build a hospital. I do not want to be eighty years old arguing in this chamber for the location because we chose today, today, to be obstructionist, arsonist, burning down our future for the expediency of our own political careers. And that's, that's what's really gross about this. You know, and I'm tired of, I'm tired of pretending that's not what's going on. People are putting their own political careers ahead of the good work of the people of Guam, about, ahead of their well-being. Putting forth the adopt, putting forth and adopting the perspectives and positions of doctors who are looking out for doctors. The same doctors that fight against medical accountability are also telling you that where is best for us is best the hospital. Most people, GMH isn't even the closest hospital. For a majority of the population, the closest hospitals to them are GRMC or Naval Hospital. And we are acting like it is a three-hour flight to Mangilau. I don't know about you, but have anybody else tried to drive through Tumuning during rush hour? I know I have. I know most of us do our waving in Tumuning during rush hour because we see how congested it is during those times. And we want to make that area more congested instead of developing a new area in Mangilau. And this development is truly visionary. It's something we haven't seen in our leadership in a long time. Not just putting up a building or fixing a right or doing, doing small things around the corner. To commend the governor, she's taken a really big swing to put a medical complex and developing an underdeveloped area of our island that could lead to other growth besides our gains in healthcare. Economic growth. Because if we have a medical center, there's going to be, have to be food for them for lunch, restaurants around them, daycares to take care of their children, and salary businesses to support this new development. But this new development cannot happen if we are responsible for ending this vision before it has come to fruition. Voting yes on this bill does not build a hospital. If every single person in this chamber voted yes, it does not put shovel to dirt tomorrow. It just sets the clock back even further and endangers monies that we could be using for our future. We talk about the extraordinary things done to secure this land, but it wouldn't have had to be done if this chamber did not sabotage a hospital. The intentional sabotage of this hospital is one of the things that has made me feel the grossest and the ickyest as I've worked in this chamber. Because I've always believed that if I look hard enough and I squint hard enough, I could see the good intentions people have. And I always try to see the good in it. But I cannot see the good. I cannot see the good in stopping this hospital for petty politics. That's why we're stopping it, for the petty politics of it? I ask my colleagues not to support this override. And I ask those that do support this override, if you so badly want to pick the location, I encourage you to run for governor and make that decision yourself. And for the people watching, remember this moment when the saboteurs of this hospital begin running for governor to ask for your vote, saying that they're going to build the hospital because the previous administration failed. Well, remember, the previous administration failed because of them. Remember, they failed because of them. But I ask my colleagues, let's not get to that future. Let's put our foot down and say and commit that we are going to build a hospital, even if we have to do the hardest thing we've ever had to do. And for some of people, that's agreeing with the governor. That's the hardest thing they've ever had to do. But I ask you to swallow your pride. Put the people first, put this hospital first. Our people deserve better. They deserve to have a hospital. They deserve to have a proper discussion without us posturing about transparency and accountability, using them like shields when we're really just trying to sabotage. Discussions cannot be had unless both parties are discussing in good faith. But that is not what's happened here. We have consistently seen this body hamstring progress. And I'm tired of seeing it. We do not have a hospital because of this legislature. Yes, I said it. We do not have a hospital because of this legislature. And if we override this veto, we will be continuing in a tradition of poor decisions. So I ask my colleagues to end that tradition and not support the override of this veto. Let's stop wasting our time, stop wasting the people's time. We do not have three or four years to go back to step one. And that's what people are asking for in this chamber. So with that, I cannot, I cannot support this override and I ask my colleagues to do the same. Thank you, Madam Speaker, I yield the rest of my time.
You're welcome, Senator Parkinson. Anyone else? Senator Tadegui, I will recognize you at this time. Anyone else wishing to speak? After Senator Tadegui, I will acknowledge you afterwards. Senator Tadegui, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and good afternoon to my colleagues. And I truly believe that there's not one person in this body that does not want a new hospital or know the importance or the need for a new hospital. We all want that, we've all been working toward that. And we do that because we hear the cries of the people of Guam. There are three branches of government. The executive, the legislature, and the judicial. And they all have a responsibility to the people of Guam. This is not a dictatorship. You know, it's ironic because in the Thirty-Fifth Guam Legislature, almost six years ago, I introduced, my first bill that I introduced was a bill that created a task force to building a new hospital, to come together. Fortunately, the governor vetoed that and decided to create her own task force, leaving us out of the picture. In fact, I forced myself to go to those meeting, forced myself to be part of those meetings and just show up to find out what's going on. When did the governor ever keep us involved in what she was doing? One of my colleagues stated the fact that, that it was not true, that we didn't know anything about what's going on, that we, we never got involved with the governor. Well, the governor, well, I don't know about this senator. Maybe this senator was being called up to the governor's office and in private and talking about, you know, pushing this body to follow her lead on a new hospital that has nothing to do with the legislature, just her way or the highway. I didn't get invited. I know some of my other colleagues never got invited. So what part of us not doing our job that we did not do? We passed legislation, Bill 185. We were asked to do our part and we did, this body did. It passed by eight votes and went to the governor to say, okay, the governor supports a hospital in Tumuning. You know, the previous speaker standing up and making accusations about colleagues on the floor sabotaging? That's ridiculous. Especially coming from him, who stands up and lies about his sexual harassment to one of our colleagues and claiming on the radio that he, he never did it. And then he's, so-
Senator Tadegui, please keep it on the merits of the-
The merit is that you're taking, the, the people who are listening to that rhetoric, to that lies, lies from a senator making up stories on this session floor to deceive the people of Guam is an injustice to the people. That's the big issue with this body making up comments like that that are not true. And we've caught these senators in a lie. The people of Guam did not vote for us to come in here and lie about trying to get it their way and making up stories. Tell the truth, tell the truth to the people. The hospital in Mangilau will cost so much more. And we all know that. And land will be taken away from families who've had their property for decades in their families will be taken away. And it will take longer to build a new hospital if it's in Mangilau. Those, those are the realities because we paid the matrix to put a report together that showed the best ability, the best area to put a new hospital that would benefit the people of Guam and the cost not to be exorbitant. Because it's on our backs, the taxpayers' money. This is going to be us. And for someone to say, it's for, it's not for us today, it's for our children? No, if it was in Mangilau, it would take a lot longer to get there. But if it was in Tumuning, I know I'll still be around. I hope, knock on wood, that I'm still here. And my colleagues, they're not that old. Because a hospital can be built in four years, four to five years if it's done in Tumuning. In Mangilau, it will take longer and will cost more. Makes me wonder, when they were talking about other senators here on the floor, that they have invested interest or that doctors are lobbying? Well, you got to ask yourself, what senators represent people who own land back there who can make a profit? Has that been brought up? Maybe somebody represents somebody over there that can make some money. And that's a shame, that is a doggone shame. We should put people like that in jail. This is not a dictatorship, Madam Speaker, you know that. We're co-equal branches of government that have checks and balances that are required. And yes, this legislature holds the purse strings. And we have to be responsible with these taxes that are paid by hard-earned people of our island who expect us to make sure that this money is spent wisely, efficiently. Not to just throw it away because it just looks good or somebody wants their name on it, no. If the governor had passed Bill 185, we would have already been on the road to building a new hospital. Instead of going to a government agency that deals with federal funding and pushing them, who is a political hire, by the way, pushing them to find a way to make this happen regardless. And we've seen several, several of her cabinet members who are, been doing some real, what I call shenanigans in their agency. And what happens, they just get moved to another agency. We've been, we've been seeing that, nobody brings that up. What about trust? What about trust in an individual? To make sure they're doing the right thing? The governor is the governor, we should have trust in the governor. But how can we have trust in someone who hides things from us? Who doesn't tell this body or anyone else what the plans are? Or doesn't invite us as a body to work together, which she constantly claims to work together? No, that hasn't been happening. She only picks a few of us in this body who's willing to stand up in session and lie. Shameful. This body holds a purse strings. It's our responsibility to make sure that money is spent wisely, as I mentioned. And it's so important that we do that because there are other agencies in the department, in government of Guam that are hurting, that can deal with public, that has to deal with public safety. We're falling short with DOC, DOE, and many others. And now we're, we just came from a conference that GVB wants $60 million. Wow. We can do it all. We can, if we work together. But that has been the biggest problem. She's not working with us. She's just doing it on her own because she thinks, what one of my colleagues saying, that we're sabotaging. We're not sabotaging at all. This is about being responsible and- This is about being responsible and transparent. Transparent. So many of you guys talk about transparency, but this administration has done nothing to even come close to being fully transparent, nothing close to that. We can build a new hospital, colleagues, we can. And Bill 185, if that is passed and overturned, we can start right away, because we know that this body will do everything it can to find a way to get that money. Because right now, we have, what, $100 million only left from the governor? Which I wouldn't be surprised if Bill 185 does pass, and with the override, that she'll take that 100 and put it somewhere else, just out of spite. Just out of spite. It's not the first time we've seen that kind of attitude with this administration. We've got two more years to deal with this, and the opportunity for us to build that hospital in an area that doesn't cost as much, that doesn't require taking land from families, that has a support network near the hospital in case of emergencies. I've talked to doctors too, majority of them, I mean, we're talking about 90% of those doctors, all ask us to keep it in Timuining. It's making it sound that we don't have to worry about those doctors who've dedicated their lives, or their money, and their time, and sacrifice to stay on this island to care for our people. Let's just throw them out the door. And if you think that this body thinks that we can get more doctors into this island, more nurses to come into this island, then you're dreaming, because it's not only Guam that's having a difficult time getting medical professions to come to their, to their aid, or their country, or their state. It's everywhere, it's an issue, everywhere. And right now, we're just throwing in all these doctors who've cared for your mother, your father, your children, your relatives, your friends, who have stayed on this island to help this island. It means nothing to you, and just say, it doesn't matter. I have not received one single dime in my campaign from a doctor, just to let you know, in case somebody wants to stand up and lie about that. Not everybody gets funding from doctors, and some of us reject it. Makes me wonder, though, how many people receive funding from individuals who have vested interests in Manila, in an area that's been dormant, doesn't, makes me wonder, they received anything, any donations? Well, I sure know that they probably got the support somehow, because they are so against having a hospital in Timuining for one reason or another, when all the odds stack up against having it in Manila, when the viable place is build it faster, sooner, with less cost, and supported by an area, the medical facility area where all these clinics are located. Because they did, the Matrix talked about Time Wise, and opened up the doggone Manila facility, the public health Manila facility.
Point of order, time?
Oh, okay, I didn't realize. I got my time. Okay, well, thank you, Manila facility, and believe me, people of Guam, we are caring for your vested interests, and not lying about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Taidi. Anyone else on the vetoed measure? Anyone else? Oh, Senator, I apologize, Senator Dwayne, I will recognize you at this time. Please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Early in my term, there was another election going on up in Saipan. My uncle says, you know, that guy is gonna win up there. And I asked him, I said, why, uncle, why, why, why is he gonna win? Because people trust him. I was like, wow, that's it, it all boils down to trust. They trust him. And he won. The governor made no, did not lie about it all through the election, the past election. She made it very clear in her, what her intentions were, where she wanted to put it. I talk about that election in Saipan, because, you know, ever since I got in here, I've always wanted to be trusted the same way as that gentleman in Saipan. I want, I want to be trusted, you know, trusted. And the governor was voted back again, she, she won a resounding mandate from the people, knowing what her intentions were. And it seems to me that the people who are, I think the, the majority already have already spoken through electing the governor. It's not that I have a number to the governor, or she promised me something, or this, or that. What I want is, I've always wanted to build a hospital, it didn't matter where it was. Just like the regular Joe out on the street, I want a hospital, and I want it now. And that's why I initially voted, to send this measure to the governor, because I want to act in haste, and I see above the politics, and I want to build a hospital now, doesn't matter where, just build the hospital. But more than that, Madam Speaker, trust is most important. Members of this body have maligned me in many ways, you know, and I, and all through this term, you know, it was heartbreaking, because, you know, I kinda like to work with everybody. But the governor hasn't done that to me at all. Every time we speak, it's very professional, it's very courteous, and I trust her. She's gained my trust. And I think we've gotten far more closer to realization of a hospital now, more than ever, now more than ever. Not here, again, to place blame either way, you know, because I want to run for governor, and, you know, in the next two years, enough of that, I'm, I'm, I'm over that, right? And so, the, the decision is before us, what to do. We weigh it, and weigh, weigh, weigh. If we pass this measure, if we send this measure down to the governor, will it solve our problems? Will it give us the hospital that we so badly need? I don't think so. All this does is being a little bit disattentive, all this does is, you know, just adding more delay, when the governor has already, I mean, I think we already got the shovels down there ready. And, you know, maybe in a couple of years, we have that hospital. You know, for me personally, and I have to be honest with the people of Guam, I think the government should get out of the hospital business. We, we are, we suck at maintaining buildings. We are horrible. You know, I teach in the school system, it's hard to keep a, hard to maintain a school. You know, we struggle sometimes down here, trying to keep up with the legislature. I think personally, my own personal opinion, is that the government should stay out of the medical, the hospital business. We already have GRMC, we have, you know, and, and I would prefer let people vote with their money, you know, and, and perhaps go off island and seek better medical care there. There's consequences to living in a small island, I always tell this. You just can't get everything you want in a small island. You just can't, it's impossible. You know, I go to the Philippines, it's so easy, just walk out in there and to the streets, and you can get a taxi, one minute, get a taxi, real quick. I try to think about it here on Guam, how can that happen? How can I get a taxi real quick? Well, you need a population, you need a large population to make anything work, but there are consequences to a large population as well. But I go back to thinking about what my dad said about the government's hospital. When I asked him, I said, Dad, why is the government running a hospital? He goes, that's because, boy, when there's no other hospitals to go to, that's the only one our people can go to. So in spite of my own personal feelings about the government in the hospital business, I think about our people. And where, where would they go if we didn't have a government hospital, even if it is poorly managed, or, or have, or struggling, maybe not poorly managed, but struggling? Because they cannot collect the payment, because our, our, our population, you know, is, is unable to pay their, their hospital bills? So where, where do they go? And so for that reason, you know, I, I have to disagree with this override. I think we are far closer to a hospital in Manila, and with all the efforts that the governor has done so far, thus far. And the governor has only showed me professional respect, and, and I, and I trust her. And, you know, it's hard for people in the member of this body here to say they trust the governor, because, you know, everybody here has some type of intentions, one way or another, but it is what it is. But I can honestly say I trust the governor, and I, and I look at Eagles Field, and we should have been, we should, we should have gotten Eagles Field. And yes, I apologize for that, people of Guam, we should have given you Eagles Field. But, you know, the government, the governor has been very, very persistent, and I, I like that persistence in the governor. I, I do. She goes, you know, if you guys are not with me, I'm gonna go and find another way. And yes, as a businessperson, I look at Manila, and I'm like, look at all the tremendous possibilities that can happen there economically, and how it would benefit the infrastructure going there. I can see it, I'm an eternal optimist, and I can see all the wonderful things that can come in, that can come from this bill in Manila. I would ask the governor to be a little bit more prudent, maybe we don't need such a large campus. Be prudent, you know, and be prudent with our, with the bill. But I, I see such a tremendous undertaking, I, I see such a wonderful opportunity for our people, and I, you know, Timuining is not too far from Tumon. You know, it's, it's economically viable, whether you remove those guys out of there or not. We don't live too far from anything on this island. And even if, even if the hospital wasn't built in Timuining, Timuining will still remain a very, very vibrant and prosperous village, either way, either way. But I also see that if the, if the hospital was moved to Manila, I believe that it would bring prosperity also to that area that has been for such a long time, remained undeveloped. And for the people of Guam, I, I don't do this with, I don't say what I'm saying for any, any reward, or, or political ambition, or anything. All I want is that I be trusted, and that we, we get this, this hospital underway. I hear it's been several administrations already, that, that we've been trying to get the hospital in some form or fashion. Each legislature, doesn't matter whether Republican or whatever, had, had stalled this, this progress. And I don't, I don't want to be a, I don't want to be a culprit, or an accessory to, to holding up this progress. I trust the governor, and I thank her for her hard work, and her, you know, for, for working toward building this hospital, even in the, with all the surmounting odds. And I thank you, Madam Speaker, for this opportunity to speak, and I wish us all well, and I wish we get that hospital up and running as soon as possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator Siniklas. Anyone else wishing? Senator Brown, I will acknowledge you at this time, please proceed.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I have to tell you, I don't know where to separate what's truth, and what's real, and what's lies, and what's, what our people truly think. I expect the votes on this bill to fall exactly the same as they always have. I expect those that support the administration to vote against the override of this bill. And I expect all those that have a sense to question actions that are taken, especially big decisions, and the construction of a new hospital is a very big decision, and I don't agree with some of my colleagues that somehow think we should acquiesce our policymaking authority to the governor, the governor. That's why I ran after all these years, Madam Speaker, because I thought, you know, our job is to ensure checks and balances in this government, whoever the governor of Guam may or may not be. This body should always ensure checks and balances, because power has a tendency, and I've watched it, I've seen it many over the years, you know, that sense of importance some people feel they so need in their lives. And I, my goodness, when the legislature kowtows to the administration, not because they agree that it's a good idea to do something, but when those that have the power of the people abuse it, because they have their own agenda, and they simply don't want to deal with those that don't agree. And there are a number of members of this body that don't agree with the governor's decision to build the new hospital in Manila. Probably part of it is cost, part of it is what is more feasible to construct, and what the people can afford, and perhaps what can be done sooner than later. The administration proposes their answer to healthcare, when the governor ran six years ago, that healthcare for the people of Guam was going to be better, because she was a nurse. So by all means, we all thought, my gosh, she must have better insight into caring for the people, because she's a nurse. And here we are, Madam Speaker, six years later, with 24 months remaining in the administration. And where is healthcare on Guam? I shall ask the people, people of Guam, how's your healthcare? Is it any better? Have the conditions at the existing Guam Memorial Hospital improved? Colleagues, let's not forget, wasn't it just a few months ago? Weren't we tripping over ourselves on the supplemental budget to give GMH a little more money, because once again, before the end of the fiscal year? Even though we put $30 million up last year in addition to their regular budget, and the governor said, oh, I'll give some of my ARP money and sprinkle it in, $50 million later, they were $15 million in the hole to old vendors. And on and on, we hear the complaints about the conditions at GMH. When it rains, it's pouring in the hospital. Didn't we hear the medical staff come down here and continue to go on and on about the lack of supplies and resources? My goodness, they didn't even have wipes to clean the patients. Not my words, theirs. Wasn't that just recently? On top of the fact that our public health in Manila continues to deteriorate every day, only to find out... only to find out that this great fire was an electrical line burning? And on the basis of that, the whole building got abandoned and left to disrepair so that remaining things that were there could be damaged, stolen, deteriorating every day? Is our health care better with the thousands of people out there that are most in need that because of accessibility are not getting the care that they need? Is our health care better? Are we going to pretend that building new walls somehow is going to make our health care better? If we cannot get that now, Madam Speaker, when this government has had more money than it has ever had in its entire history? And of course, wasn't that money dedicated to ensure the health care of our people during a time of COVID? You would think that we would have come out of COVID even better. That we'd have more resources available, that the conditions at GMH would be exceptional. Is that the case, my dear people of Guam? I don't think so. Where do people go if they have insurance? Are they tripping over themselves, first choice to go to GMH? Or are they up at GRMC? Where are you visiting your friends and family lately? Including some of us here, where do we go? GRMC. So let's not kid ourselves because this administration right now, during their time in office, they're kicking the can down of the realities of the need of health care today. People that are sick and dying today, who are not going to be around to wait six, seven years from now for this multi-complex to be built. That's the argument I have. That's the concern I have. And when we met with the admiral not too many weeks ago and the question was asked about what investment are the military going to move forward with what we're now finding is a substantial increase of military personnel to Guam? Not five or 6,000 Marines? Let's multiply that. What was the response, colleagues, for those of you who were there? Did they say, oh, yes? Because I also asked the question. Naval hospital is so undersized, even for that buildup. The old hospital had more capacity in their wards than the existing hospital does. Even the, oh, we have the clinics. Those clinics are not going to be large enough to accommodate the volume. And we're just talking routine health care. We're not talking about all the other ailments that we as human beings have. So are we going to rely on the military unless the administration's not telling us? Is the, you know, behind the scenes or the feds offering more if they put it in Mangilo versus putting it into money? I don't have a big, you know, group of doctors supporting me in office in the now 16 years that I've served in this body. So I'm not tripping over for the doctors because, oh my God, the doctors are my big supporters. But it makes practical sense. Yes, there are those that may have invested and built their clinics into money. Well, of course, doesn't that make rational sense? Because it was close to where? The hospital. And so somehow, we're going to be raid and belittle them because they made that investment, because they stayed on Guam to take care of our people, many of them that came from elsewhere and made their home here and invested here? And now we're going to laugh at them? Belittle them, diminish them? But oh my God, during COVID, they were our heroes. But now if they don't agree with what we want, well, they're nothing. Well, let's think about that next time something happens to us or a loved one and we need a doctor to take care of us. Because right now, they're lower than dirt if you're going to listen to the administration. Totally ignore these doctors. Who cares what they want? But no big deal, they're just going to move to Mangilo. You know, this is politics not at its finest. But we trust the governor. We love the governor. You know, it's the kind of nonsense for me that I am just dumbfounded by. Maybe it's part of our colonial history that we feel we've got to bow and be in favor for those in power, even if they're doing the wrong thing. Because, oh my goodness, that must make us important people. Because we rub our shoulders with important people that may give us favors, may give us jobs, may give us contracts, may give us appointments. Oh, by all means. We turn a blind eye even when they're doing the wrong thing because we don't want to stand against the pressure, just in case they come after us. Just in case maybe the governor calls you with such frequency, it irritates you because, you know, she wants you to vote a certain way. I don't get those calls. There are quite a few people here that don't get those calls because they're not in. We know who they are, they know who they are. But when we're going to make these type of big decisions, these big decisions that are going to cost the people multi-millions of dollars, then by all means, the people of Guam elect the legislature to make those financial decisions. We determine those appropriations. The only thing different now is Uncle Sam gave the governor of Guam all those federal funds. And colleagues, do you remember those of you that were in the last legislature that went to the invitation? We know the rare invitation, but the legislature got, the members got an invitation to go to Adalou. So you could go down to Adalou and tell the governor what you thought these funds should be spent on. Do you remember that, colleagues? Remember that meeting that the media couldn't sit in on? I don't know because I didn't go. It kind of bothered me. They said the media couldn't be there. That kind of made me wonder, I don't think it's a meeting I'm going to be in. Where did all your wonderful suggestions go? Let me think. Oh, shucks, my memory's getting slow here. Nowhere. That's where that engagement went. Nowhere. This administration wants to do its own thing. God forbid, if we were not a democracy, what would happen? What I do know, colleagues, is that the tide is shifting, whether the administration sees it or not. I didn't get reelected into this body. But I also realize as I'm getting older, there's a season for everything and maybe there's a reason that even I don't know. But I leave that to God. He's never led me in the wrong way. But what I see, my colleagues here that are getting criticized on the other side of the aisle, I checked the voting list and man, I think the people of Guam decided, hey, we kind of like that Speaker Therese. And oh my goodness, not far behind, there's that senator that proposed this bill. I didn't see their numbers go down. What I did see is the colleagues that were aligned with the administration. Those numbers went down. What did I see is something I have worked very hard for, not a single one of my Republican colleagues can deny. My agenda's always been to get a Republican majority. And it has happened. Though I'm not in, it's okay. There's always a blessing in disguise. But there is an incoming Republican majority. Hopefully, the new Republicans will ensure that they walk the straight line that they should, that the Republicans would want them to walk. That's what I see. So if we somehow think that the people of Guam decided that the administration's direction is the way to go, they might not have seen the election results. The people of Guam should have a say, even though the governor says you have no say. We're going to remember that. You have no say. Well, the people of Guam elected this body to have a say when it comes to the finances of the people of Guam and deciding how the people's money gets spent. And that I don't trust on this governor or any governor. The Guam Legislature has a responsibility to ensure checks and balances so we don't see the abuse of power. Isn't it amazing how quickly, at lightning speed, they're trying to move to get this Mangilo property secured? All of a sudden, let's go through Gura, let's get the money through Gura. Let's, oh my God, you landowners just don't want to save your land, let's condemn their land. Because this is what the governor wants. But let's not mistake, this is not the right thing to do when you don't have the parties that have the best and biggest interest, the people of Guam, not at the table. Because the governor wants what she wants and the heck with everybody else. If the legislature, as before I ran, they just rolled over. When this administration came in, they rolled over. The Guam Legislature turned a blind eye. This is one of the few terms of legislative. We don't even have oversight on a regular basis. Because we just don't want to look under the rug at all the dirty that's down there, especially when it's on our side. Let's keep it quiet. We abdicate our responsibility when we do that. This is not being done the right way. This is not being done with engagement and the people. And how interesting, my little bill. One of the few pieces of legislation I got through is requiring that public meetings need to be properly public noticed. And then if you don't do that, that should simply disqualify any action taken during that meeting. Because I very much feel that accountability and transparency and the visibility of the people to access and know how public officials, including those that are appointed, are making decisions on their behalf and spending their money. The people of Guam should know about that. We shouldn't be hiding things like that, especially big decisions like how we're going to build and where we're going to build and how we're going to fund a hospital. The people of Guam are the ones that are missing at the table. And if they're not at the table, then there's something very wrong with this process. So I stand in full support of the override. It may not pass, but I certainly hope in the next legislature, if I count nine plus one, I'm sure the nine Republicans can find that 10th vote to make the decision on where that hospital should be constructed. So with that, Madam Speaker, thank you for the opportunity to comment on this bill.
You're very welcome, Senator Brown. Anybody else wishing to speak that hasn't spoken? If not, Senator Barnett, you may close. Oh, Speaker Therese, I do apologize. I will give you the floor, you may proceed.
Situas Masih. It's amazing what some of the comments have been today on this floor. And I'm afraid some senators just don't know what their job actually is. And I really hate to say that. Because I really love the legislature, always have, always believed that it is the representative of the people, more than any other elected official. Because they can't do what they want by themselves. They have to work together with a consensus. They have to, by law, listen, have public hearings, get input, amend legislation so that we have a community united. But some senators think we shouldn't do any of that. We should just go where the governor goes. This might be the first legislature I've ever heard of who thinks that. It's actually just a few senators. And I think that's really an injustice for the people of Guam. If you're here to represent them, then represent them. We all want a new hospital and we want to move on that as fast as possible. But that does not mean that we do not do our own jobs, which is to be a senator of the 37th Guam Legislature, represent the people of Guam and make your decisions based on what is best for them. The Organic Act gives the governor powers and it gives the legislature powers. And when this was brought to court in Brudaleo versus Baldwin and the Ninth Circuit very clearly said, who has what power? And they said, the legislature may of course determine whether a hospital shall exist at all, where and how large it shall be, the size and qualifications for appointment to the governing body and a wide variety of other matters establishing the laws of Guam, subject to which the governor perform his function with respect to the hospital. And the governor could not alone decide to take this Tamora Land Trust land at Ipau Point? No. Neither could the Tamora Land Trust decide to give it to her. That required the legislature. So we acted on that bill. We reviewed it, we analyzed it. It required a bill and we approved it. The legislature voted yes. The governor could not alone transfer land from the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission. So we also introduced that bill at her request. But she did not get enough votes on her bill. It failed. So I don't know who is saying things like sabotage or delay. There is no such thing on my part. Failure to get enough votes is failure to get enough votes. The governor could not by herself enter into a long-term agreement committing the people of Guam and taxpayer assets to the military without legislative approval. The governor by herself should not be allowed to condemn property without legislature approval. And so we might have a delay in building this hospital. But that delay is because when we passed the bill amidst the controversy of where to build it, the governor vetoed the bill. So of course, there is a delay. Because she didn't like that decision by the legislature, the policymaking body of Guam. And she refused to bring the information down when she wanted us to agree to the Eagles Field lease. We said, can we see the details? We practically had to beg for the lease itself. Then we had to ask for the details that weren't attached to the lease that said they were going to be attached to the lease. We invited her to come down in a meeting, in a public hearing, anything. Just disclose the information. That's all the legislature needs. We need the truth and we need the information so that we can rely on something besides our opinion of whether we like somebody or we don't. We relied on a study. A study funded by them. A study that said very clearly, it would be faster. Infrastructure costs would not be $100 million like they were in Baragada. They would be less and it would be faster. We built it at Ipau Point. And the delay or sabotage perhaps is going to come again because of the violations of law that the Attorney General has been pointing out in the last couple of days. Violations of separations of power, open government law. The governor should just explain the details of what she wants to do to the legislature so that it is reasonable and she can get enough votes. It's very simple. I have met with her at every occasion that she's invited me. So I don't know where some people in here come up with the stories that they make up. I follow her studies. I voted for the funding to allow her this broad power that really, we don't give all governors, was to find it and fund it in almost any way possible. We allowed her to go out for a bond, lease back, all types of things. So we did not delay. What happened was she didn't want to tell us the details about Eagles Field. And she seemed to be in some kind of agreement with the military that we're not going to declare that excess lands anymore like the Secretary of the Navy had already declared. And we're not going to fight for the ancestral landowners anymore. That's something of the past. Since when? But we asked her for the details. And if they were compelling, we would have been able to see that. Just like we are asking for the details now, if they are going to move forward, condemn property, purchase property with the ARP funds that they promised to use to build the $1 billion hospital. It's a $1 billion hospital estimate. And we were feeling a little assured, well, there's $300 million in ARP. At least we're going to get started. But it looks like not. We're going to use that for land, we're going to use 100 We're going to use that for land, we're going to use $100 million at the very least just for infrastructure. We're nowhere near starting. We went to the Tourism Summit today because we're in a crisis, and one of the speakers reminded us of the quote. "You want to move fast? Move alone. You want to move far? Move together." And one of my colleagues said, "Without a proper discussion, we are in this situation." We will continue to fail if the governor, even if she forces the location, if we are not able to communicate on the details, what are behind her decision. Because the ones that have been put out in public, they change. We were told about infrastructure costs in Baragota being $100 million more than at Ipau. Even military studies in 2010 pointed to Ipau Point to build a new hospital. How is that unreasonable? We were told we needed something in the South. Well, we've got community health centers in the South that were not opened, they were shut down, they were starved of urgent care, when that's within their mandate, they're starved of resources, there are no ambulances working for the South. Of course, the people of the South should be up in arms and want facilities. And we should be able to take care of all the people of Guam. In their private meetings around town, with other groups, not with the legislature, they promised the veterans a new facility, they promised a new hospital, or a wing, or a Ceboc, or all kinds of things that we couldn't really put our hand on because it wasn't clear. And we asked them, "Where are you getting this?", and, "Oh, that's in our discussions." Well, we asked the two admirals in a recent meeting, "Is there any such thing? Are you funding a new hospital for Guam? No. Are you funding an expansion of the Naval Hospital for Guam? No. Are you building a Ceboc clinic in Mangilao? No. What we might do, they said, is bring in additional providers for the Naval Hospital. So if there's some other hidden deal somewhere, I'd like to see it and know about it, and I think the people of Guam deserve that. That's their hospital. It's going to outlive every one of us, hopefully. So there's been a lot of personal things said in here, but I'd like to think that please rise above that. Just do your jobs. Let us do our job. If you don't think it's your job to have the hearings, attend the hearings, hear the input of the people, hear the people begging you, then so be it. And I hope the people of Guam can see that. But I think if we are going to consider factors that are not on the table, let's get those on the table. And let's make it look reasonable to everyone. I don't find a single unreasonable person in this legislature, except when they start saying, "We have to follow a governor when we are a legislature." It makes no sense to me. It's like that's exactly what we are here to do, is to do our part. If we're going to finance it, then it better be something that's going to live and live longer than any of us, is going to be able to meet the needs that we have. It's simple, and it's reasonable. And if we want to keep fighting and throwing into the media, "This is her fault, or my If you've got something reasonable, let's see it, let's hear it. Tell us the details. Why do you keep promising things that aren't true? Why should we believe the new promises to be true if the past promises were absolutely We've got land ready to build, we've got infrastructure, we've got a consensus, so we can move. But if we want to keep fighting, not us, but she seems like she's going to end up in a battle with the AG over these other purported illegal actions, why? Why? If it was such a reasonable plan, couldn't she have laid the cards out on the table for all of the people of Guam to see that is exactly what the people of Guam deserve? So I stand in support of this in hopes that it will move this process along. Sisus Massey.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Ma'am, I rise to a point of information.
I will acknowledge you on the point of information. Please state it, Senator Fisher.
Thank you very much, ma'am. The Baldwin case, which was recently referred to, but my friend, the speaker, which can be found at 624 FedSec at 932, does not hold what she said. The Ninth Circuit said... The question presented to us then is whether, when the governor is specifically charged by the Organic Act with the responsibility for establishing, maintaining, and operating hospitals, the legislature may, within the terms of that act, reduce his or her function with respect to the governance of the hospital to a mere ministerial function. We, the Ninth Circuit, hold it cannot. So far from what the speaker led us to believe Baldwin held, it does not. Thank you.
Duly noted. I will go ahead and acknowledge Speaker Therese.
I'm not leading anyone to believe anything. I'm reading word for word from what the Ninth Circuit said, and yes, they did say, "Governance of a hospital, like the board, the governor has control or a part to play in that." But it also says, and I'm reading it word for word, quote, "The legislature may, of course, determine whether a hospital shall exist at all, where and how large it shall be, the size and qualifications for appointment to the governing body, and a wide variety of other matters establishing the laws of Guam, subject to which the governor perform his function with respect to the hospital." Subject to the laws of Guam. Sisus Massey.
Duly noted. Anyone else wishing to speak? If not, Senator Barnett, you may close.
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker. And again, I thank my colleagues for the very lively debate this afternoon. I wanted to first start on the doctors, as I have before me a testimony from, it wasn't just a couple of doctors. Literally just about every doctor in medical organization has testified in support of Bill 185, to include testimony that was signed by American Medical Clinic, FHP, Seventh Day Adventist Clinic. We have testimony that was signed off on by a very large group of pediatricians who also support Bill 185. We also had the entire Anesthesia Department of the Guam Memorial Hospital submit testimony in support of Bill 185. We also had a urological surgeon, Dr. Leo Patero, testify in support of the bill, as well as numerous other OB-guys and medical personnel. But I want to here highlight the testimony that was provided by the then Office of the President of Medical Staff at the current Guam Memorial Hospital, Dr. Jonathan Seidel, who explained the reasons why the doctors support and the medical staff support the construction of the new hospital at Ipau Point. And I'll go ahead and read, "One of the key critical reasons is the fact that most of our medical staff live and work within 10 minutes from the current GMH. This is not by chance, but it is because we must respond to life-saving emergencies. The response time is critical for our providers to attend to patients. Without this critical care access for providers, patients would be left with their lives at risk." So I'm not going to be the one to stand up and, you know, defend the credibility or the honor of the doctors, but I will say that the entire time we have debated this issue, it has always been about saving the patients' lives. Always. And one of my colleagues said that this is the farthest we have come, the closest we have come to building a hospital. I agree, because for six years, this administration hasn't done anything. And the passage of Bill 185 by this body was literally the only consensus that our government has placed on the record relative to its official stance about where to build a new hospital. Because our people will be the first to tell you, "We need a new hospital." Not necessarily a medical complex. We need a new hospital. That's what this is about. This is not about investment in Mangilao or creating a new economic opportunity. This is not about building a new Walmart. This is about building a new hospital, which if we do again at Ipau Point, will just cost us a quarter of the cost for the utilities at Mangilao. Supporters of the governor's vision, and I find it ironic that with all of this vision, she has overlooked the state of our island's health care. But they say that we need room to expand, and I counter that we can't afford room to If we build at Ipau Point, the existing Guam Memorial Hospital footprint will be available to us. And I also want to dispel the idea of the medical complex, because we have heard, for those of my colleagues who have bothered to show up to the hearings, who have bothered to read the testimony, we have heard that the Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center is going to expand, not at a proposed medical complex in Mangilao, but on their existing footprint in Timoning. One of my colleagues accused me of thinking I know better than the governor. And it's exactly because of politicians thinking they know better, why our government commissioned a study that was conducted by the Matrix Group. And this study said that Ipau Point remains the most viable option to construct a new hospital. Why did we do that study? Because we wanted to take the politics out of the hospital site selection. One of my colleagues also argued that the government needs to get out of the hospital business, and I completely agree. And the shenanigans that are ongoing, these dark dealings that are ongoing, the governor proceeding to do everything her way, circumventing the legislature's involvement, is exactly why we need the government to get out of the hospital business, and it's exactly why we did a study. Because we didn't want to leave it to the personal or political preference of not just this governor, but any governor. And since the beginning of this year, working with Gura, the governor has been desperate to avoid the involvement of the legislature. And now that we know that she broke her promise to the people of Guam, the promise that said she set aside $300 million to build a new hospital, we know that's now down to $100 million. And she has been moving very quickly with Gura, and I think she's been moving quickly out of desperation. Desperation to get her way so that she can put a Band-Aid on the gaping wound that is her true health care legacy. The people in the South don't only deserve urgent care, but they're supposed to have it at the Southern Community Health Clinic. The people in Mangilao have not been able to avail of public health services. And I drive by that facility every morning. My colleagues talked about transparency and how some use it as a shield, which I found insulting, because transparency is exactly what the people of Guam want. But it seems like this administration is allergic to transparency, because every time we in the legislature demand transparency, Adalou breaks out in a rash of political attacks and petty press releases. One of my colleagues in here accused other members of maligning him. And I would just say, "My dear colleague, you maligned yourself." The speaker called it an injustice to the people of Guam, that we have not been able to make progress on the construction of a new hospital, even though this body has spoken, spoke very clear, not just about its support to construct the new hospital at Ipau Point. Also, we were very clear about this body's lack of support for the governor's preferred site of Mangilao. The retiring speaker was right when she talked about checks and balances. That is one of the most crucial and integral roles that we have as elected representatives of the people, to be a check and balance, to make the difficult decisions, the decisions that say we don't need 102 acres of medical complex across the street from a missile defense base. Why do we need to build 102 acres, my dear people of Guam? It's because in Mangilao, we cannot build up. Why can't we build up at Mangilao? Because it's across the street from the missile defense base. And if we build up, our people's hospital runs the risk of getting hit by incoming or outgoing missiles, and those are just the facts. It doesn't make much sense to me to build a new hospital at Mangilao. And I notice the deeper we get into the argument, just on the new hospital, my colleagues muddy the water, and they say, "Oh, it's not really about a new hospital. It's about investment. It's about an economic boom." That may be all well and good, but we are not discussing investment. We are not discussing an economic boom. We are discussing our people's desperate need for a new hospital. One of my colleagues was on the radio last week, and the talk show host had asked him if he thought that the override of this bill would be successful. And I had to chuckle, because my colleague had told this radio host that he didn't even know if we would have 10 members present for voting to override the bill. I don't think it's very clear by what was said that this override may not be successful. But I maintain that it's absolutely the right thing to do for the people of Guam. There will be further delays. As quick as the governor is moving, this effort will come to a grinding halt once the court challenges begin. So colleagues, I again ask your support for this measure so that we can give the gift of a new hospital to the people of Guam. Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. On the motion to move.
Yes, ma'am, I'd like to renew my motion to place, despite the objections of the MAGA HOGA, Bill 185 into the voting file.
Can you just read the 185 dash?
I may, Madam Speaker. Veto Bill Number 185-37LS, an act to add a new subsection, 83117, Chapter 83, Title 12, Guam Code Annotated, relative to requiring any new hospital constructed pursuant to the Guam 21st Century Healthcare Center Act of 2021, to be constructed on Lot 5173-1-R2 New/R7, Lot 5173-1-R2 New/7, and Lot 5173-1-R2 New/6 in the village of Timoning. Thank you.
Onto the voting file. Onto the...
Yes, ma'am, I would like to place that onto the voting file, despite the objections of MAGA HOGA.
Thank you, Senator Barnett. On that motion, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none, motion carries.
Sisus Massey, I have several motions I'd like to make. One is, there are a couple of bulk cart bills that have been worked on throughout this term that are ready. Some of them, other ones are not. Some of them, other ones are not. But these two, we've gone through the complexities and they are ready to move. So I'd like to move to place Bill Number 379 as amended by the Committee on Health, Land Justice, and Culture, which is an act to authorize the Chamor Land Trust Commission and the Department of Land Management to realign the bull cart trail from the north portion of Lot 2019-REM through the north portion of Lot 2021-2-R1, and to allow the owners to consolidate their lots for seamless development. Onto the session agenda.
Onto the session notwithstanding.
Yes.
Not with...
This report was reported out at the beginning of our session.
But on our notwithstanding.
Correct.
Thank you. On that motion, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none, motion carries. Speaker Terla, you still have the floor, and we are on motions.
Yes. I'd also like to move to place Bill Number 381 as amended by the Committee on Health, Land Justice, and Culture, which is an act to authorize the Chamor Land Trust Commission to sell 1,580 square meters of an existing bull cart trail through Lots 5045, 5051B, 5046B, municipality of Tamooning, formerly municipality of Dedido, or to authorize CLTC to transfer to the Department of Land Management, DLM, and authorize DLM to exchange the 15080 square meters of the bull cart trail for approximately 13,101 square meters of 60-foot-wide public easement through consolidated lots 5045, 5051B, and 5046B, municipality of Tamooning, formerly municipality of Dedido, to the session agenda as well.
On that motion, on the notwithstanding motion, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none, motion carries. Senator Will, oh, you still have the floor. You have any more?
Just got one more.
One more?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd like to move, notwithstanding the rules, to place Resolution 579 onto the session agenda. And this is...
Can you read it, please, ma'am?
This is relative to censuring the disorderly sexually explicit gesture committed by Senator William A. Parkinson during the October 2024 emergency legislative session.
There is an objection. All those who wish to put it on the session agenda, please signify by raising your hand. Eight, wait, guys, please raise up your hands. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Motion carries, it's on the agenda. Anyone else? Senator Dwayne Siniklis?
Yes, ma'am, notwithstanding, I'd like to make a motion to place Bill Number 180-37COR, introduced by myself, Dwayne T. D. Siniklis, Tallo Tadegui, William Parkinson, Joe Sinagaseen, Roy Abikanata, Jesse Luhon, and Christopher Duennas, an act to add a new subsection 40145 to Article 1, Chapter 40, Division 4, Title 5, Guam Code Annotated, relative to the transfer of Inalahan Pole Park from the Department of Parks and Rec Recreation to the office of the mayor of Inalahan, to the session agenda.
Senator Dwayne, is that a notwithstanding motion?
Yes, ma'am, notwithstanding.
On that motion, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none, motion carries. Senator Will, oh, you have one more? Senator Dwayne, please proceed.
Yes, Madam Speaker, notwithstanding the House rules, I'd like to place Bill Number 2224-37COR to the session agenda.
Can you please read the title, sir?
Yes, ma'am, introduced by myself. This is Bill Number 224-37, an act to amend subsection 3102-1, I mean Point 1A of Chapter 3, Title 16, Guam Code Annotated, relative to waiving the driver's license fees for spouses of active-duty service members.
On that motion, notwithstanding, Senator Siniklis? Senator Tadegui?
Thank you, Madam Speaker, I'm sorry, I didn't get the bill number again, I'm sorry.
Bill Number 224-37COR.
On that motion, are there any objections? Do you have a point of information?
The status, Madam Speaker, is introduced on 12/20/2023. A public hearing was held on September 13/2024, and there is no committee report.
And there's no committee report. Is there any objections? There is an objection. All those in favor of putting this bill onto the agenda, notwithstanding, please sign.
224. Ma'am, may I clarify, it's an act to amend subsection 3102 of Chapter 3, Title 16, Guam Code Annotated, relative to waiving the driver's license fees for the spouses of active-duty service members.
Notwithstanding, is there an objection to this bill? There is. Senator, do you have a point of information?
Yes, Madam Speaker, I had a point of information to state. Also, Bill 180, the Committee on Rules does not have a committee report for that one as well.
Thank you. Notwithstanding, is there an objection? No objection? No, no, I'm, if she, that's why I verified it, and she didn't raise her hand. There is an objection. Raise your hand, guys, if there's an objection, there's an objection. All those in favor of the motion, notwithstanding, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five. Motion fails. Anything else, Senator Siniklis?
Thank you, Madam Speaker, I just wanted to... I wanted to do that to support our active-duty military spouses who take on foster children. Thank you.
Thank you. If not, Senator Will, on the motion, notwithstanding.
Notwithstanding House rules, I'd like to reconsider the actions of the body regarding Dr. Nathaniel Berg and put him onto the session agenda.
On that motion, are there any objections?
Madam Speaker?
Yes, Senator?
Yeah, I have to recuse myself, he's my doctor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. On that motion, are there any objections? There is an objection. All those wishing to support the reconsideration to put Dr. Nathaniel Berg onto the session agenda, please signify by raising your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. There was only seven. Are there anybody wishing to do any other motions? If not, we will go back. Senator, Senator Dwayne Siniklis, we are on motions.
Ma'am, I'd like to make a motion to reconsider the action of the body on 224-37.
224-37, can you read? On the same motion regarding the driver's license?
Yes, ma'am. It's Bill Number 224-37. This is an act to amend subsection 3102 of Chapter 3, Title 16, Guam Code Annotated, relative to waiving driver's license fees for spouses of active-duty service members.
There's a motion to reconsider that. Is there an objection? There is an objection. All those who wish to support the motion, notwithstanding by Senator Dwayne Siniklis, signify by raising your hand. One, two, three, four. Motion fails.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
If there's no other motions at this time, it is 4:05. Speaker Terla, I will ask you to proceed. What number? On Bill Number 379-37. Speaker Terla, you are recognized.
I move to place Bill Number 379-37COR as amended by the Committee on Health, Land, Justice, and Culture, introduced by myself, Speaker Theresa Lahey. It's an act to authorize the Chamor Land Trust Commission and the Department of Land Management to realign the bull cart trail from the north portion of Lot 2019-REM through the north portions of Lot 2021-2-R1, and to allow the owners to consolidate their lots for seamless development. Onto the, I mean, I move that to third reading.
And you'd like to speak on it, right?
I would like to speak.
Please proceed.
Sisus Massey. This was a bull cart trail movement that had actually already gone through the Guam Land Use Commission, the Chamor Land Trust Commission, with all of them agreeing. And notice had been given for their hearings. However, the Chamor Land Trust Commission did not feel authorized to sign the new map that had been created. So they, the property owners, they all came to us asking for some resolution, and they thought the legislature could give them that. So we did confirm at the hearing that this would allow the Chamor Land Trust to sign off on these maps that had already been approved. And it's actually, when we reviewed it, a good deal for the government. This allows access to the ocean, the ocean shore, similar to the existing bull cart trail. But it also allows it, instead of going, you know, cutting across the property, to go straight on one border of the property. And then that property owner would be allowed to consolidate with others for potential development of that area. This bull cart trail would continue to serve its purpose then as, you know, access points for the public. And it will, it's going to be actually better, I mean, sorry, bigger, larger, and more improved that way. So the committee agreed with this after the public hearing and after all that information was fleshed out, and it had been duly approved again by resolution of the Chamor Land Trust and by the Guam Land Use Commission. So I asked my colleagues for their approval of this realignment of the bull cart trail.
On that motion, is there anyone else wishing to speak? If not, Speaker, would you like to move it to the third reading? Voting file.
No, I just want to, you know, conclude by saying that this will improve public beach access, straighten and widen the existing trail, enable consolidation of other properties, address the boundaries and make them very clear after these maps are signed so that the adjacent landowners can move forward with their plans for their properties with these boundaries set in stone now. And so again, I thank my colleagues and I ask them for their support.
On the motion to place, Madam Speaker...
I reiterate my motion to place the bill on third reading for voting.
On that motion, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none, motion carries. Speaker, I'm going to acknowledge you again for the next bill.
I'd like to move to place Bill Number 381-37COR as amended by the Committee on Health, Land, Justice, and Culture, introduced by myself. It's an act to authorize the Chamor Land Trust Commission to sell 15080 square meters of an existing bull cart trail through lots 5045, 5051B, 5046B, municipality of Tamooning, formerly municipality of Dedido, or to authorize CLTC to transfer to the Department of Land Management and to authorize DLM to exchange 15080 square meters of the bull cart trail for approximately 13,101 square meters of 60-foot-wide public easement through consolidated lots 5045, 5051B, and 5046B, municipality of Tamooning, formerly municipality of Dedido. There should be some floor amendments, I think, that, oh, no. There are no floor amendments.
You're moving to the third reading?
Yes, I'm moving this to the third reading as amended by the committee. And so this again is...
Please proceed.
This involves ancestral lands that was returned to the ancestral lands owner. It's a large tract. There is a bull cart trail that runs from one of the roads that goes into Two Lovers Point. The main road going into Two Lovers Point. The property is on the left side of that main road, and it goes to the cliff. So there's a current bull cart trail that will take you from that main road to the cliff. And their proposal was to realign that bull cart trail and make it a public easement. So it's going to end up, again, on the exact same part of the cliff that the original bull cart trail was ending up at. So it will allow the identical access that was previously allowed. This transaction, we are authorizing that the CLT sell it to those ancestral landowners. This, they are trying to divide their property up. They are in court trying to divide it. And my understanding is it depends on whether they can move this bull cart trail or not. But it's been lingering for many years now. They're proposing a 13,101 square meters of 60-foot-wide easement in exchange for the bull cart trail or to simply buy the bull cart trail. So the purchase of the bull cart trail would be, according to this bill as amended, it would be at the... It would be at the approval of the Chamor Land Trust. So this just authorizes them to do that, and it would leave that in their hands. And I ask my colleagues for their support.
Anyone else? Thank you, Speaker. Anyone else wishing to speak on this measure? Anyone else? If not, Speaker, would you like to move it to the voting file, please?
So I reiterate my motion to place Bill 381 as amended by the committee to the voting file, to the third reading for vote.
Senator Tadegui, do you have a... Okay. On that motion to place Speaker Terla's Bill 379? 381-37 to the voting file. Are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none, motion carries. Do you have a point of information, Senator Tadegui?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, after reviewing, I mean, it was so quick that Bill 180-37 was placed on this agenda. And it's now come to my attention that, you know, unlike the other bill, Bill 224, I think it was, the objection is because there is no committee report that is on the website. And I found out that Bill 180, even though I'm a co-sponsor, I'm the first, you know, co-sponsor on that legislation, I think it's important that we be consistent. And there is no committee report. It makes it very difficult for us to look at the legislation. And, you know, it allows for the people of Guam also the ability to get online. But I don't even see it online right now. So I ask the body reconsider the vote on placing Bill 180-37 on the session agenda. But, Madam Speaker, if we can have one minute because the author of the legislation right now is speaking with the mayor because there may be a situation where the mayor does not need this bill right now because he, there's an MOU and understanding.
I will allow you that one, that moment's recess.
I think Speaker might have some...
Moment's recess.
Okay.
Amina Trenta Shetin and Les Latour in Guam is back from recess. Speaker Therese Terlai, I understand you had a point of information?
Yes, there was a question brought up about the bill 180 regarding the Inalahan Pools, and I just want to put point of information that the reason it's not reported out, we tried, it was there only, there were not enough votes in the committee to report it out, so despite us circulating that. And then, in the interim, there was an MOU with Department of Parks and Rec that transferred several parks to the mayors of the villages, including Inalahan Park to the Inalahan Mayor, but perhaps a sponsor could confirm that as well.
Thank you very much for the point of information, Speaker Therese. Senator Dwayne Siniklis, I will entertain you at this time right now.
Yes, ma'am. It's true, the, I just found out that the mayor had gotten a memo, a memo of understanding with Parks and Rec for control over the park.
So, do you have any motions in place, sir?
Yes, ma'am. I withdraw that, withdraw that bill.
Make a motion to withdraw.
Notwithstanding, House rules, make a motion to withdraw that bill.
180. On that motion, colleagues, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none? Motion carries. Oh. Resolution 579-37? Amina Trenta Shetin and Les Latour in Guam is back from recess. I understand you have a motion. Senator Tydegui, please state your motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, at this time, I make a motion that we recess until 8 o'clock, come back, finish the agenda as well as vote at 8 o'clock.
On that motion, are, is there an objection? Is there an objection? Seeing or hearing none? Motion carries.